Executive session for statute sixteen dash four dash four zero five, A double I for personnel.
And the urinal is the least proof you make them.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed same time. May I get approval of the minutes of the regular meeting and executive session of Tuesdays at September fifth, two thousand twenty-three?
Your honor, I move that we approve the minutes for last meeting.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed same time. Any nominations or recognition? I would like to nominate Bonnie Rich and their crew for their seventeenth annual shining show. They had a great turnout, beautiful day for it. And I would like to nominate Asha Townsend for her upper art.
Ball festival.
Ball festival. Thank you. Any others? We have several certificates of recognition and handout. We have Martha Big Bird and Asha Townsend from Madison, Maine. Martha is not here, but we can nail hers unless she won't get the. It was fun and great as always. Yeah. There you go. The ones.
Nice job.
And then we have Daniel and Vicki Kirin, member. Did I say that right?
I live there.
I live there. All right. For their Newcastle resident through veterans talking veterans meetings. Very much needed and very much. Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan.
And we have a certificate for the veterans talking to veterans as well for time to vote. Thank you very much. But all of you. Thank you. Thank you. Citizens Business and Writing, we have David and Johnny Brown for sewer forgiveness. We have a letter dated September sixth, two thousand twenty-three. Newcastle City Council, this letter is to ask for sewer forgiveness for Diamond W. Mobile Home Park located at eleven thirty-one Wood Street from November twenty-two thousand twenty-two to June twenty-eighth, two thousand three. When the water bill remained high on the November two thousand twenty-two bill, this had never happened in the seventeen years of Oldham Park. We began to investigate the cause. We contacted the city to ask them to reread the meter to double check. We started by looking under each individual trailer. A few leaks were found and taken care of. We waited for the next month's bill to see if it changed our usage. The next month, we entered each trailer checking hot water heaters, toilets, and closets. Once again, a few were found with leaks. The next month's bill still showed excessive usage. At the recommendation of the city crew, we checked all the locks once there was snow on the ground, looking for areas that showed melting because the water pit had water in it and the meter was old. It was replaced. Still no change. Once the snow melted, we began looking for areas that were draining up quicker. We determined the leak must be underground and contacted Barnsworth Services that ended May to begin pot pouring to find our leak. They began to hydro back on June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and the source of the leak was finally discovered on June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, four days later. It was five and a half feet deep and underable home. The water was channeling underground and never came to the surface. We apologize for the delay in submitting the request and thank you for your consideration. David and Johnny Brown, Diamond W. Mobile Home Park. They're asking for a total request forgiveness of two thousand sixty-one dollars and ninety-two cents.
Greg, could you have some more over there that you want to tell us about?
We just assisted with searching out the leak. First thing we did was change out the meter. We found out they were using water basically twenty-four hours a day. Never stopped. No, we we assisted as much as we possibly could, so. They were they were fairly diligent by trying to get this fixed.
I talked to David a little bit about this and it took him quite a while to find the location. Several particles in the area when they were trying to do their investigation, they narrowed it down to one area that didn't have any water in it and they were able to close it in closer to it. It's not like they just let it go for, no, they did, but it took them a while to try to find it because it never surfaced.
They give a significant number of underground water leaks in the trailers. All the risers come up underneath the trailers. I think there's twenty, twenty-four subjects there.
Now, I have a question for you. Stacy, if we could forgive the two thousand sixty-one, is that just the excess?
Yeah, I kind of compared in, I didn't go past March because of the sewer forgiveness that we go on in in April. So we just kind of compare the year prior to this year.
Your honor, I move that we forgive the sewer in excess of two thousand sixty-one ninety-two for David and Johnny Brown.
Second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion?
I've seen leaks like this before and that's a pretty good sized pinhole in that line. And so I, I mean, they probably had considerable expense trying to locate that. Yeah.
All in favor say aye.
All right.
All those opposed same time. Citizens Business and Writing, number two, Michael Davies, appointed planning and zoning board. So we have a point application from Mike, Michael Davies, for planning board three-year term. He thinks he cares about my community and would like to make a difference.
Is he here?
Yeah, he's a chap, yeah. So he might interm engineer. We do actually currently have two spots on that board available.
Well, it seems like he wants to be part of the board. We need, we have two vacancies. So I I would make a motion that we nominate Michael Davies to be on the Newcastle Planning and Zoning Board.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed same time. Citizens Business, verbal, number one, Caleb Carter, Westingtown Natural Resource Minister.
Yeah, I just wanted to come give you an update on hazardous waste state. So the board, the board did decide to move it to Upton this year. That was per ongoing request from the Upton Town Council wanting to relocate that. And also, the last couple of years, our attendance has definitely been down if you count by that number of cars and and the amount of material that we've taken in. So we thought, well, this seems a good time to move it. And I I don't know what our collection will be in Upton. I anticipate it will probably be less, and that's okay. I mean, really, what we're trying to do is reach out to the whole county. And also, I have been working with Greg and his department to get a quote on disposing of the batteries for the radios and water meters. Is that correct? So the lithium batteries for the new radios and water meters that the city is using. So hopefully, I'll be giving a quote on that soon. And the city will be able to make some plans looking ahead on on that, or at least compare options. And we're happy to help provide that as a service to the city and help facilitate that process. If it turns out that our, you know, working with our contractor, which is the only, is is cost effective, then, you know, great. And if not, we'll maybe help you link some other options too. So, but yeah, I haven't heard back on that yet, but should be here soon. And it sounds like maybe about four to five years out, we're probably looking to have quite a few of those potentially. So, yeah, so we're working on that. So our hazardous waste state will be this Saturday. It'll be in the welding shop parking lot, which is that building in front of the high school. And it'll be set up there from ten to one. And we'll have the same collections that we've had historically here in Newcastle. We'll have electronics, we'll have different chemical waste, oil and trees, all the auto fluids and everything. We'll have also the prescription drug collection as well. That's been a big, a big one as well over the last several years. So glad that we can incorporate that in there too. So and then, as we did here in Newcastle, previous Red Office, we're taking donations for the Upton Food Bank as well and encouraging people to bring food items for that. I think it's a great way to clean up, you know, keep stuff out of the landfill and also support our food bank and support our community. So excited about that opportunity as well to continue that. And, yeah, so. And want to thank the city council for your continued support of the district and our programs. I realize that we're not hosting hazardous waste state in Newcastle this year. So if you are still interested in supporting our programs, I didn't bring it in voice because I wanted to talk with you and see if that's something the board would still be, or the council is still interested in doing. Some of the things that we have been doing outside of that as far as would be related to Newcastle. We started a bat box program last year. We distributed about oh, twelve or fifteen bat boxes to people across the community. We did a cost share on those. And we're in the process now of collecting information back on how that process went, what people experiences were there. We also have increased our education offerings through community ed. We had, I think, a total of seventy-plus people attend the community education programs I offered on trees and loads and storage management. And had really good response from there. In fact, they requested that teachers take classes in Upton this winter, so they're going to keep you busy. But that's been fun. We recently hired a new office admin, Erin Garland, who will greatly help increase our capacity. So we're really excited to bring her on. And she's already been a great asset. She'll be one month and three days, so three days only, and one month mark with us. So it's been great having her on board. She's been really helped us increase my capacity to get out and do projects on the ground. And we're really looking for more opportunities for her to run the country and to help promote some of those ones. So we have our community tree grant, which is ongoing. Where we support planted gardens across the community. We helped support the one up here next to the city hall that we partnered with the Newcastle Tree Board on and stuff. So we still have a lot of programs that we're doing that try and benefit the community. Again, thank you for your continued support.
Thank you.
Thanks, Emily.
Caleb, do you have a flyer to send me for the auction?
I think so, yes.
Can you email it to us?
Yep.
Put it on our, like.
Yep, I will do that. Yep. Yep, I'll send it to Stacy tomorrow. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I I really enjoyed the conversation that we were treated to at the council meeting.
I think it makes the public feel better about things as well to know they're heard. Every time I hear a person get cut off, they they think their rights are taken, they're, you know, my rights are being taken away. I have a constitutional right to speak here. You're my elected official. I'm your employer. And all of those things are are very true, in my opinion. And I think that there needs to be a more free, free flow in these meetings because, you know, the government always talks about these elected officials, how they wish they could hear from the public more. But I don't think that grabbing one of them on the street does as much as approaching the council and airing your grievance or discussing an issue or bringing up a suggestion does to the whole group. And I think that when chairs shut that down and don't let people speak, that it does more harm than good, definitely.
Citizens Business, number two, Don Taylor, owner of Andrea Heights. Utility rates?
Thank you, ma'am. City Council, thank you for speaking. I actually have to choose a subject to talk to you about starting with the utility rates. When you guys announced that you were going to increase the utility rates, even though I'm not acting as commissioner tonight, I understand with budgets that those kind of things have to be done. They have to be done. And a lot of people don't understand that something can't stay the same forever. However, I brought a couple of examples before I get going of my utility bill. And I only got four, so if you guys could share those. This is the past twelve months, which your clerk was carrying out to give me a copy today. And then go directly to the last page. And you will see this utility bill after the increase, we saw a two hundred and eighteen percent increase in utilities. One, all around, checked a couple of things within three hundred miles of your utility companies. There's no utility company that's pushed their rates up two hundred and eighteen percent anywhere. It's just, now they go up incrementally, they go up over time, but not two hundred and eighteen percent. Check with our plumber, check with the building, we're not leaking any water. So this increase is legitimate, but if you just look at the water alone, two hundred fifty, fifty, the sewer, three hundred eighteen, fifty-three. I get it. However, you didn't find out you guys were in the hole with this yesterday or last week or last month. You knew this was over time. I'm sorry, old memories come back pretty quick. And I go back to what's the dispatch and say, well, you guys were running in the black for ten years. So the answer was is let's jump up the rates and have these obnoxious rates. Well, that's great in theory, but it's not, it's not appropriate for constituents. You have people with fixed incomes. You have people that, you know, work very hard for their money, and that's a significant jump. Now, maybe all of them didn't go up in that substantial way, but in a household, that is substantial, even if it's a hundred percent increase. I spoke with your mayor, who informed me that she bought this and you guys passed this bill. She bought it, and and I agree with her that this bill is outrageous. And the bigger picture of it is you haven't even seen it yet. The bigger picture is, is let's just take my facility. But I'll go back to my, an old business of mine, the restaurant. The restaurant serves water, needs the toilet, has to use cooking water, has to do those things. So the first thing that goes in a household budget is the entertainment and the movies and the going out to dinner. So not only did you hit the business with this huge increase in pay, you also are taking customers away because there's some people that simply have to cut back on their bill. They don't, to me, I look at this bill and go, okay, it's a bill, it's obnoxious, I have to pay for it. But in the long-term scope of things, you guys are hurting the city and the people that live in it. This should have been incremental, and if it wasn't caught before now, then you guys were asleep at the wheel. And the other part of that is when I say you guys, I don't necessarily blame you guys. I blame it because frankly, the commission has been that way too, and the past commission. We tend to take these positions and we don't want to make any real decisions. We want to kick the problem down the road. And then ten years later, at some point, some commissioner, city council has to deal with the problem that was never endorsed to begin with. And it sucks. But just like dispatch, you know, having two dispatches would have been obnoxiously foolish, irresponsible on both groups, and we're forced to deal with it. This should have been handled differently. I don't have all the right answers, but I see that bill and I go, wow. What is the fixed income person that's at home, what are they going to do? Well, they're going to stop, they're going to cut back and spend somewhere, not put as much fruit on the table, not go to the movies. All businesses in town that are going to see the hit of this effect. At very minimum, in my opinion, it should have waited till the slower season. Because, yes, time does three things. We go out to the gas station, we see a dollar eighty-seven for gas or two dollars and twelve cents for diesel. And in one day, we see a two hundred percent increase, we're all happy with it. So what do you think the constituents? They're going, what is this? Why is this happening like this? So I'm not blaming. All I'm saying is, is look at the bigger picture, and you haven't seen it all yet. You've seen that you've gotten, I'm not going to say got away with it. You're like, oh, it's come down in the past week or two. But you haven't seen the real effect of it. And now we're going into Newcastle, especially the slowest time of the year, where businesses need that one or two extra people to stay around. So was I upset about it, sure? Do I understand it completely? The way it was put out and the way it was made to see that, I thought was less than great. Well, less, there could have been a better way we did that.
Can I, can I ask for a bit of rebuttal? So I'm kind of skipping ahead to my report on rates in the mayor council number report. But we had a lot of upset citizens here last meeting. Sometimes I'm not always as quick on my feet when there's a bunch of upset people in the room. One of the things that I did present before the council was contracting with a third party to evaluate our rates. There was a need to get this done on an accelerated time schedule based on some of the shortfalls in the budget. There was going to be a price tag to pay for the services of a third party. And the council opted not to do that. But the third party could have done things like evaluate, you know, how to charge people on fixed incomes. They could have, you know, evaluated it in steps so that we could have done it over a period of time. And they do it for a living. So there wasn't anybody on the council that felt like they were an expert at rate setting. We were advised by the Public Works Director and and I believe that you were involved too, Stacy, at some level, for trying to figure out the rates. So, I mean, and they're both professionals, but they're maybe not professionals on the scale of someone who does this for a living. So it would have been a twenty thousand dollar bill for water, sewer, and garbage. But it would have come with all of those other benefits. And it would have allowed us to impose these rate increases a little bit slower than that so right now, you know, in the moment. But it was very necessary that we do this because no council before us, there'd been a rate increase in in two thousand nineteen, but it was a small one. And we were still grossly underpaying for our water and our infrastructure was suffering toward it. So it was necessary, but now we got to be the ones that make the decision. And one thing I did not appreciate at the last meeting was, Mayor, you threw the whole council under the bus. You said, well, I was, I didn't want to do this, but but the council made this decision. Well, in your position, Mayor, I feel like you should support the council's decision, even though you didn't find it popular. Everyone else on this board voted for these rate increases because they were necessary. And at a prior council meeting, when the Public Works Director and the clerk had gone and had some rates drawn up that I personally didn't feel were were appropriately done. You you told me, well, at least they got the the conversation started, right? Well, we finished the conversation and it's done, but a little support from our mayor would have gone along with you.
I'd like to say that I don't disagree that we needed to increase rates, which we talked about earlier. The need was there, but how it was handled, somebody was asleep at the wheel. It should have started long before now. Now, whether whether it was just an oversight or whatever it was, you've been in the hole with that for a while. So you've made a small increase and it goes from there. I just want you guys to understand that the impact of this is going to be bigger than what you see in two or three weeks.
Mr. Schiller, I have a question.
Yep.
I do want to interrupt you.
Yep.
On your usage here, September of last year, you used nineteen hundred gallons. Then October, you used eleven hundred, nine thousand in November, ten thousand in December, thirteen hundred, or thirteen thousand in January. But then we go down to July this year, you used twenty-three hundred. And for the month of August, you used thirty-five, or thirty-five thousand gallons.
Yeah, it's twenty-three thousand.
That, that's your increase right there.
Yep.
Usage went up.
Absolutely. And that usage could be varied from we weren't full, now we are. It could be from how much water was used for the garden, get all that, all those things are there. But you see those bills, it's still from our average bill, still a two hundred and eighteen percent increase.
Don, but what he's saying, if the two hundred percent increase isn't all the city and all our rate increases, your usage rate.
I understand.
I had the same problem with my own lawn. My bill was five hundred dollars. And so my usage went up because I tried to save my lawn and then I decided that, you know, it just, it's just something that we can't. We did raise the rate. So last time I was on the council was two thousand and nineteen, and that was our increment then. And then nothing happened and all that. I supported this all the way. And and there are places that people can go, and and we know that the people on fixed incomes, we have, Stacy, what are those things that you give them?
We asked for a while ago.
Yeah, and and so there are places that they can go to get up on their bills. And I I don't even say that I'm sorry. This this had to happen.
I'm not asking for a pardon. I have, it's justified.
The repercussions are here.
They're not here yet.
Well.
They will be here soon.
Well, we're in the winter now, so nobody's watering their yard and nobody's watering their garden. So thank goodness it is.
Again, I understand it completely. You're here for the infrastructure sucks, but you, this should have been looked at. The infrastructure alone should have been looked at many, many years ago.
So we decided Larry Price, blame him, but you know, but we can't do that because Larry is not going to be here to pay the bill.
That's true. Absolutely true.
I, yes, I did vote the council on good luck. I'm not going to deny it. The thing is, is yes, I agree we need to increase our rates, but I wanted to do it due diligence for not only our constituents because it wasn't their fault that our forefathers did not do a small increase. I wanted to try to do it in increments or over quarters.
Well, and I totally understand that, Mayor, and I have a lot of faith in you, which is why I said that. But I'm also aware that you didn't only need to justify that. I'm also aware, Mayor, that you guys were applying for grants and you needed to show revenue. So those are things that the constituents may not a hundred percent know that you can justify these actions on, but it still looks bad. If you guys are applying for grants and you need to show revenue, then I scratch my head and go, well, why was the council? head and go, well, why was the council so hard about getting rid of dispatch when they were in the hole? Was it because you needed to show revenue? I don't, not questioning it, but what I'm saying is, it looks bad. On all these things I've said, face to face, and I'll say a million times, it is true you guys were applying for grants. But I don't think the constituents know that that's what you were doing.
On your comments about dispatch being in the hole, I want to make sure everybody understands, dispatch, money does not come out of these funds.
I understand.
These funds are called enterprise funds, and they have to pay for themselves. So money that pays for dispatch, pays for some of our employees, obviously some of the employee cost comes out of each one of these buckets, because they work for the water department, or they work for the sewer department, or the landfill department. So it kind of pays for that. So these all have to pay for themselves, and, or like you said, over the years, they've been underpaying and trying to fix things.
You guys were put into a tough position. And I'm not here to say this was wrong. What I'm saying is, is how it's come out, that part is wrong.
Totally agree.
Well, obviously, we weren't put in the tough position. It's the whole damn city.
True, but you guys were put in a tough position to make the decision. So again, it hasn't completely affected you, Al.
Well, for sure, when that guy turns on his saws, or that lady turns on their faucet, they damn sure want water to come out. And when they flush the toilet, they sure may want that to disappear.
It's true.
And that's, and we're getting, we can't fix things. We can't go back into some of these old, old pipes and get rid of them. So we have, you know, we're stumping on fire here and there, and trying to get the old...
Just like me, you have a budget in front of you, and those things need to be looked at in depth, long before these things happen. And again, I'm not playing blame on you guys to do the business. I'm just saying, it came out long, and those perceptions are out there. Well, what do you mean they applied for a grant? They needed to show revenue. That is the, when you talk about transparency, that...
That's a good concept to bring up. Mr. newspaper man, help us with that, please.
It's on tape. My next thing is something that happened today, and I'm sorry, I am a little irritated about it. I understand that, I don't know if you're aware, it kind of goes along with this. Over the holiday weekend, I was in Idaho. I have, I'd say a dozen witnesses to say I was in Idaho, but the same news with some friends. And over that weekend, on a Sunday, in fact, holiday weekend, we had a sewer backup. Called our local plumber, who came out and responded, has done, always done a good job. Monday I got back, they were cutting out roots or doing whatever they're doing. I'm just saying, I don't go down, I don't go in the sewer and check it out. I called my plumber and said, here you go. So suddenly, three city officials show up and say, what's going on down there? I said, we had a sewer backup. I have no idea. I just got here, just got home. They said, okay, and laughing. I find out today that our mayor was making calls, never talked to me, by the way, to our plumber, and said that, that I had an officer peg, which I think is an outstanding police officer, so I did not really give her a hard time, said, you have three witnesses that saw me pull the manhole cover, and there was some kind of a hose there. Well, it's funny, because I was not there. Never there. Never saw the manhole, never saw any garden hose. And suddenly, I'm given a citation saying I'm in misdemeanor, and a ticket to me, Donald June Taylor. And this undergo states this has happened on August or September 18th, which it leaves today, not three weeks ago. And suddenly, I'm going to court for this misdemeanor, and could get up to $750 fine. One, I called my plumber, who said, no, didn't know anything about it. That's why I brought him here. I certainly wasn't there with his people, which he can attest to, and I called him like normal. So suddenly, I'm getting this, which also, I thought, well, maybe you guys must be applying for another grant. It's ridiculous.
Ridiculous.
I never pulled a manhole cover, and not any of your three witnesses, according to Peg, saw me, because I wasn't even there, wasn't even around. So how did they witness me pulling a manhole cover and holding some garden hose down the sewer? And that's directly from Peg, who told me she's sorry she had to do this. And the other thing is, my problem, Mayor, is, we talked about a lot of things. Why wouldn't you call me instead of calling everybody else? And I would have already told you this.
I didn't call.
No, you called the plumber.
Because supervisor was out of town, and two people he put in charge, it was me. And so I called and asked Sean if they could just give a report, so when we got back, they could have it.
Okay, so have you witnessed me doing that when I was not even there? And secondly, I never saw garden hose or manhole cover. I simply called the plumber like I would for anything else in my business, and said, take care of it. So how did you witness me doing that?
We did. We witnessed that.
Oh, well, your police officer said you did.
We witnessed the plumber's...
The plumbers?
Garden hose coming out of the building, into the sewers.
And well, I don't know where that would come from, because why would we do that? And secondly, like I said, he's in the sewer to clean out sewer holes, so the plumbers were there, for sure. But I certainly wasn't. So how are you writing me a ticket for it?
The problem has been, what was in the sewer?
Oh.
Four people inside.
But you knew I did it?
You owned the desk.
Oh, so I'm the one that, no, I was told by Peg, we could bring her in here, that you had three witnesses that said I did. Well, all I'm going to say about this is, I fully intensified it, so I will reach my attorney out to it. And then after it's proven that I did have nothing to do with it, I'm going to countersign the city for the damages that you guys incurred. It's bull crap, and you know it. I don't even know anything about a hose or a manhole. I simply made a call on Sunday to have my plumber there, and I think my plumber will attest to that.
Yeah, you want me to add some stuff to it?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Sunday, we get called out. We went, we rode a river, we hit something hard. So, we told the people at the building that we can't get through it. Either we're going to have to dig it up, or we're going to have to throw it down to the manhole. Now, my question to you guys is, reading his paperwork, as a plumber in this city, we're licensed, can we pull manholes?
No, they're supposed to put up if I ask the question.
Okay, so, I have to get my guys in here, because they said that it was okay by somebody from the city...
I called him as well.
To go ahead, pull the manhole, so we could rock up the main. So we did that, tried to do that on Sunday too. So, we didn't get it. Monday came, I get another phone call from Montel Hines, one of his employees, said our sewer's backed up. I called the plumber, he was there Sunday. He said, Sean, we hit something, we don't know what it is, we're going to have to get another bit, grind it out a little bit. So we didn't go Monday. We went again Tuesday. And then that's where all this manhole thing come, the hoses in the sewer. And tonight, I drilled all three of my dudes, and told them, you better be telling me the damn truth. You better be telling me what the hell's going on. And they told me, we did not stick no damn hose in a damn main. So I don't know how it got in there. So I'm here to say, we did not put no hose in a main. So that's why I'm here tonight. So, when we showed up Tuesday, we did get a dumb plumber. We did send our sewer truck out. We did suck up all the sewage that was on the floor, down the basement. We cleaned it up, because you have a facility like that, you definitely have to get something cleaned. You have people upstairs that depend on a clean residence.
Amen.
So, so I don't know where this all came. I, I mean, when Pam called me up, I was just dumbfounded. So, we kind of went out, we did our due diligence, we wrote letters, everything that we knew that happened. So, and then he called me up tonight and said he got a fine. So I don't know where it is. So, as a licensed plumber here in the city, we got to give you a call or get a permit?
You got to call the engineer or myself.
Okay, so do we have to get a permit?
We have to get permission to do it.
Just permission.
But I thought I said they had permits.
Well, yeah, we did have permission from somebody to open a manhole.
And how do you get a ticket?
The other part of that is, is I went to my staff, which by the way, are CNNs, and they laughed at me and said, yeah, Don, we just went out to the sewer hole and just dropped this down in there.
I knew you'd find out.
Yeah. I'm like, I get it. But the part that bothered me, like I said, most was, is Peg said, we have three witnesses that saw you.
Wouldn't this make this disappear? This is ridiculous.
I will have to look at everything from what is given and commissioner. If all this does end up being something that you were wrong, then I truly do apologize.
And that's fine. I mean, you'd feel the same way, though.
But trying to make some sort of deliberation on what happened from here, from this position, without everything and all the evidence.
You have the plumber and you have me. What else do you need?
The three witnesses that said that you were the one there. I'd like to talk to them if I can.
I just have a quick question, as a concerned citizen, I'm not involved in this situation, but I'm just honestly curious. I mean, did someone call the city and say, I saw Don Taylor doing this, and we just issue a citation? I mean, can my neighbor call the city? How did this even come to be a thing? I just need to know if the city of Newcastle issued citations purely on hearsay. Because if someone like me, they can just call you and be like, Holly was on Fifth Street, and she took the manhole cover off and put a hose down there, and y'all go, ooh.
And your three people that can't...
I mean, we need to know where this even started. I'm not, I'm not saying, you know, I'm defending Don Taylor personally. He was in Idaho, so I know he wasn't here. But that's not even the point. I'm just honestly and purely curious, someone in this room has to know, because someone issued a citation, where did it even begin?
Yeah, that's why I asked.
Where, how did they know? I can tell you, this is the first I've heard of this. I have no knowledge of any of them. Just pick and place.
So who issued the citation?
Yeah. And she said she was told, she apologized what she was told to do.
By whom?
The mayor.
Derek, I talked with the congressman, saying that I have this information, it's left for the legislature, and it's started, started, and paid. Officer Mike.
Okay, well, let's focus. It says right in here, he failed to get a written permit. And that's what the ticket said. And he says he don't need a written permit, he just needs permission. So the ticket is bogus from the beginning. Prove of the rotten tree. There we go, right there.
I'll look into it. If this was a main sewer issue, it should have been a city, not you guys. Right?
So, if you tell me, so from the main, we wrought out, and then we hit something hard, so...
Well, between the facility and the main, the price is yours.
But sometimes we have to go up the main, to go up to the customers, their personal sewer. So, yes.
I went by that while they were sitting there, doing that. They had the cover off, and they're laying back up there. And I think the hose that they're talking about, just the rod, because it was coming out the back and going into the main, main, uh, manhole cover, or manhole.
Because you're not going to do anything with the garden hose.
I didn't think we could do anything with the garden hose when you're trying to rot sewer.
Hey, Sean. Sometimes when you're rotting, right, when I worked for the city, if you're rotting a line, and you get your, you get the stinger stuck, we break the hose loose, and then leave it there until we can figure out how to get it out. There was one time on Main Street that we were rotting, on the main, it was 3:00 in the morning, we're standing there staring at each other, we can't get the hose out of the, out of the line, so we ended up breaking it loose off of the...
Right, we weren't stuck. The deal is, is between...
They just hit something hard, and they couldn't get through it, so they retract it.
So between my sewer rod, my sewer rod, which is metal, and from what he's getting a ticket on, is a garden hose. So there's two different deals here.
Somebody mistaken the hose for your rod.
So something, something...
mistake, whatever.
And our rod didn't get broke, I mean...
My God, we had three witnesses.
But anyway, I'm just trying to figure all this out, because...
But the issue is, I think you're saying, you're literally absurd.
That's my concern.
So...
He wasn't hearsay.
When I got a phone call...
Two employees, running the garbage truck on that route, on that Tuesday morning. They saw it Tuesday morning.
There's three guys, the garbage truck?
No, there was two, plus myself and another employee. We headed out to look at the project we're working on in that area.
So now there's four witnesses.
The witness, Don Taylor, takes the manhole.
No, the witness, the garden hose going into the manhole from the main. It did not intend it to be Don Taylor, if it was him. We don't know where the garden hose was, why it was in the sewer.
No garden.
Did anyone daily come up there?
Do you have pictures of this, by the way?
Was that on a Monday? Yeah, Tuesday, because we were on the second garbage truck on Tuesday, so that was on Tuesday.
Is there pictures? Can we see pictures?
Unfortunately, they did not.
No pictures. Oh, weird.
So what was the garden hose?
No, you would feel, someone's like, and Peg was great about it, she said, but we have three witnesses, let's say you did it. I'm like, no, you didn't, because I wasn't there.
That was mine in Idaho. I can tell you, that's why you get a little more high rate. I'll just whip a little bit up here right now, like it was given to me, for sure.
Absolutely, thank you. Is there anything else that I can add to that?
Nope. I mean, that took it back though.
You can't have it back now.
We have a mayor council number report, number one rate.
So I addressed one of the things I wanted to address during Don Taylor's portion. The second thing was, I had a constituent come to me concerned about sewer rates, because they felt like they were getting charged for their irrigation usage. But in a sense, I talked to Clark Tagerde, and I think I talked to you too, right, about, they don't charge based on usage during the summer, because the software has, hasn't built in where it's only charging you the amount you used from November to March. So you're getting charged for your winter usage, which is actually going down the sewer. And so you're not actually getting charged for the inflated usage for irrigation. You're getting charged to winter, your winter rate, basically, so that you can, so we're still drawing revenue for the sewer, but we're, but we're not charging for all of irrigation usage. And I was, his chief concern was, he didn't want to pay for the, you know, the inflated usage for irrigation. And that's all I have.
I want to ask something in regards to the utility rates. So I've been looking at, you know, those common areas, and what they charge, and, you know, the limits, the first, the first amount usage with the fixed price. And, I mean, it's really low. When you have a house of two, or three, or four, you know, what were we talking about crazy, about a thousand dollars per person you would think in a household?
About a thousand gallons per person.
So, could we, would it hurt us to raise that first limit usage?
Maybe we may run down a lot by the fixed rate.
Can we, I mean, to me, I would think, would it hurt what we're trying to do by increasing that to maybe four thousand, or even five?
The fixed rate goes to four thousand seventy-two.
We do have a lot of sewer community set for tomorrow night, at 4:30. We can discuss that. That's where I should come in.
I think we also need to discuss third-party consultants, because I think we need somebody to do this, but does this for a living, and does a really good job.
Yeah, then we can blame him.
Well, and then, the amount of revenue that we get per month is enough to pay off the, the cost of hiring a consultant, and I think it would be money well spent.
I think that's something that should be, with that, that first three thousand gallons. I think that's something that should be, with that, that first three thousand pounds to be inflated first. That was my thing I, I wanted to add to that. Anything else on rates? Under Mayor Council Number Reports Number Two, Community Project, I did ask that Sprockets to, if they were able to come to attend. We did have, you know, our last council meeting, we did get the $100,000 from Park Pacific towards the community project. And the council did talk about the top three, and the top, the first one was the bike park, the bike pump park. And so I did get in touch with Jeremy, and he got some crews together. And we went out and looked at the two areas that we thought would be good for this project. Did some discussion, then we met with the refinery the next week. They got to talk with Mike and Nicole over there, and we got some more good information. The one property that we were looking at, that the refinery was going to let us use, is not something that we could put the bike pump park at. So we want you, need to find out if the council, if this is something they want to look forward with, because we would have to make an amendment or a motion to change for the other location because we have just the most properties up for sale. By the BLM, so I think those, what is that, three or four lots?
There's three city lots that were just built, just has water and sewer into it right now. It's a wrong side saying that.
That's a great area, then the kids from my street used to go over there, made that into their, they used to use it.
They used to have a white trash, unofficial white trash.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I think, pretty cool.
But also with this process, before we go into making any motion, right, to let everybody know what we've gotten done so far, Jeremy, I don't want to, like, if I'm wrong, please correct me, but you said that there's a possible grant from Forestry that we could apply for as well?
It would be possibly through Wyoming State Parks and Recreation Historical Agency. It's not Forestry, no. So it wouldn't be through the state.
Okay. So there's another grant that we could try to apply for, for this project. And they can actually apply through the, probably the 501(c)(3) that that Sprockets is. And then also, there's Cellular One gives out $50,000 a quarter for 501(c)(3) grants that we can try to apply for. And I spoke with Bucky Brahmouser, and he said Barnesworth Services would donate the dirt work to move things around. I do have a meeting with a gentleman who does concrete work to see if he would donate time and the work, the labor for some of the concrete work. And then MMK has a meeting tomorrow and has the information, they're going to talk about it as well. So I have a feeling this is, you know, we looked at, Jeremy talked about phases, but I think with how vulnerable a lot of these little air, local businesses want to help, did state that I think we could probably get this all in one scoop.
Where are we now? Where?
For the bike pump park.
Where?
At the, the land kind of be...
Okay. So that's the area that we're talking about.
Yes.
Off Salem Street.
Yes. And that land right now was put up for sale. Right. So if we want to look forward with it...
It has water and sewer services on it? Up two, yes.
Up two.
Just three.
So if this is something that...
Also, we can build a bathroom for the pump park if we need to. I move, so we stop sale of that land and put it towards the pump park.
Just every day is to open it up, I think.
Yeah.
Just the shape of, shape and geographic layout, layout of land.
A residential.
Yeah, you could, but it's going to take a while.
I second the motion. No discussion?
So we have a motion second. Any further discussion? I know that governor's...
Well, I remember Bob, Bob, Paul, Harvey, the city first, Bob, all that. And we, we actually took inmates in there when we could squeeze in, make crews, and it was just full of tinware and rush and that. And we had them cut a bunch of it out, the city held it to the mall, probably, I believe, and I had them clean a bunch of it up. And what, like Greg said, those, those last ones left there would be pretty hard to, and it's all pretty much shit on, do you know, upon. And, and, but when they did put the, when Bob did, to make the property lines and corners and all that, they did put the sewer water up to those lots. And those ones, I was on the city council, and this was in the early teens, two thousand something, they've been for sale up and down, up and down, signs taken off, put back on, and those ones just have not sold at all, probably because of the difficulty. And that one directly behind the BLM, Roger Heskey told me there is a spring under there that just keeps running. I don't know if Greg could verify that or not. You'd have to, whoever built the house there would have to go to a lot of special stuff, put a house on top of that spring, stuff like that. But I was picking up litter and stuff back in there, one of those, they had tried a bike path, you helped route back there themselves, those kids did.
We, if I may, to support you, yes. There is a, I don't necessarily know if it's a spring, but there is a natural drainage down through there, it does hold water. We actually took dirt from the South Summit Avenue Water Project over there, had to contract it down there so we can spread it out and raise the grade so we could get rid of the water. So, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you for helping me out there. I think it would make an excellent spot. Really, for housing, it's not too good what's left there.
Jeremy, do you like it?
The group does like it, yes.
Yeah, you think it's a good spot?
Is it the best in the town? Probably not, but it is a good spot. Centrally located relatively, it's a good quiet spot, neighborhood likes it.
A little back up the Leighton Pass a little bit.
It's, it is adjacent to the bike path as well for the community. Quiet street, so if kids zip out into a street, it's not critical. There is parking that would be easily be available to. So it has a lot of strong points.
We also talked with the residents that this would be, this would be in their backyard, and that was the Uter Shears and the Castellos. And in fact, the Uter Shears were pretty excited to have that for their little kids that they have there. And the Castellos thought it would be great, too.
Do you like it, Caleb?
Yeah.
All right.
Hey, I'm just excited to move forward with it. You know, we've been talking about it since I moved, probably even before I moved here.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
I was excited when the mayor came in and said that there was funding available, so...
What's really cool is we also talked about possibly adding stuff in for the skate park. So if that is possible with the layout and plans, then we can look down the road to maybe turning that old ski park back into either Pickleball and Tidings or something.
I have a question. Jeremy, have you guys got a real plan for a park, a skate park or something?
We've developed a handful of plans, granted the rough drafts, because we've looked at six locations, I think we are to this point. So this would be number six. And I kind of got a little tired of drawing up detailed plans for something until there's a yes on the location. So it would be easy to incorporate. The bike park is very flexible in design. When we add the skate element, that does change a little bit. And we would probably suggest getting some design input from people that do that type of design or find a, a design that's ready to use for a location. It's already developed and you just fit it to your location. So yes, it would work for us and we could probably have some pretty conceptual designs. And depending on how the grant works, not the grant, but the process, we can always scratch in starting trails, not necessarily phases, but something that kids could ride this year even, while the plans are developed and a real park is developed and we're...
Cool. Yeah, this is great.
Michael? But we have a lot of other resources. We all sat and talked that we still need to make contact with, so like Black Hills Energy and their, also their handshake and kiss and maybe individual that took over. So we can get help from Black Hills Power once we get in contact with them on two different aspects. One for lighting and then one also for some extra lighting. And then there's a couple different bike places in Rapid City that can help us with places that design these kind of parks. And then a place in Colorado, looking at, you know, AstroTurf as well, so there's some like paintings in some areas. So this, I think it's going to move fast once, next we start moving there.
It sounds like it's kind of taken a different shape than when you guys first came in, gave it to the top of the council and, and, you know, voiced an interest or started looking for a place to build.
And John will be getting a call too.
It's not getting too complicated, is it?
Not in a bad way. I figure if we're going to do it, we're moving from the point where it's just a handful of guys and a little bit of equipment making a track to something that the town can be proud of, that an asset to the town, the community, when new families move in or try to decide if they're going to move in. It's an amenity that we'll have in town that will bring all the value to our town. And a place where our kids and ourselves can go and use. So yeah, I think it's been a little bit more complicated, but not too bad, in a good way.
Is it? I just have to ask you, is this something that, are there competitions on these types of tracks?
Uh, yeah, there can be, but I mean, let's just, let's get us something that we can ride and not worry about competition or anything.
I just sit on the line.
It could possibly happen.
These will be kind of like the first $50,000 we get this year. I asked Stacy if she could add like a line item just for this project, because those funds, they need to give us the check before the end of the year for these, the first $5,000. And then on January, if they're new here, so then they'll give us the other for the project. So, but I'm thinking of writing this down.
Yes. Just so you're all aware, in case you don't know, when we developed the bollard, it was black hot back then, but they put all the sidewalk in, the concrete in the sidewalk in that bollard for bike paths to that refinery there. Or blackout, I'm sorry, it was blackout, is what they were called then.
So the motion on the table is to take the property off of the real estate and then use for the, this project. Correct?
Correct.
So we had a motion and a second. Any other discussions? Yes?
We probably have to resume it.
I have to check the answer this year about the park about that. Is that all three lots or just...
They'd be all. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. You guys?
Aye.
All right, moving forward. I love it.
Old Business, Dow Avenue and Brade.
We did not, I did not get a chance to investigate what there's a during the due across that park. If there isn't, are you interested in anyone or what's, what would be the council's question?
Well, we got the easement, we have two grandparents.
What's that?
What is the responsibility that we inherited?
Yes. So I, it's up to the council, 10,000. Well, with what inflation's going, it could cost 10,000 dollars right now.
Okay, and so it's not our easement, it's their responsibility?
Basically, if you send her a during the due statement, does anybody else?
Thank you. So we just need to determine if we have an easement there.
I did not get to the court.
So we just need the cable list and tell them that's meeting.
All right, so Old Business, number two, Dow Park Restrooms.
Yeah, I've got a comment, Councilor.
Okay, now, Mayor. We got the certified mail back, so Mr. Hoskins did actually pick it up. It would have been on September 6th. We sent it out August 22nd. I'm not sure what the, why it was so slow, but we still have not heard a reply. I wanted to ask the council as to what date we would like to wait before initiating some sort of, you know, recoup suit, or if you wanted me to send out notice one more time, or what the council would like to do. So he has received it September 6th, so he does have notice of it. I haven't heard anything, but 6th is, I mean, that's too long.
How about the first of the month, October 1st?
In the letter, is there a date or anything for a reply once perceived?
I basically didn't, so I didn't put a notice date, but by this certain date, at that point, especially with the liquidated damages clause, I thought that the $800 per day that's established in the contract would have been sufficient for them to respond as soon as possible, but that obviously wasn't listed.
Councilor, can we get a note letter, like as of today's date, with that all added up, just for them to take notice?
Yeah.
I think, Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's $32,000. And then the start date of liquidated damages would have been August 18th of 2022. So it's substantial, it's around $30,000 on top of the $30,000 paid.
I got, yeah, I would have to double check.
I think they should be reminded of that clause and what's happened to them. And they, now, this is a question to the council. What if the counselor was able to say, look, you've got, you've run out quite a bill here just in liquidated damages. If you get on the spot and get this done now, then, then we would forego those liquidated What do we think about that? And a little coaxing there might encourage them to get the damn job done.
$30,000 worth?
Well, it's ours and half the site up in the ranks.
Yeah.
So, and I don't remember what the date of the covenant is for that point.
The entire purpose for the liquidated damages clause was because, and obviously, it would be nice if they would just deliver everything, you know, tomorrow. The issue is, is that it's been almost, I think it has been more than a year. And that actually has costs that are unforeseen. So that's the whole premise of the, the other thing is that the clause itself basically says that there's no legal recourse for it. It will be paid, basically, is what it says.
Is it, since it's over here, does it still require?
No, I mean, it would just be a reach. They are an Idaho company, as an Idaho company, they're up on their taxes and everything else, so I'm not, you know, if I would have stopped bankruptcy or something to that effect, I would have at least understood to some extent, but they're up to date on everything.
You just don't understand why they won't, they must have the bill finished.
More contact.
Yeah, just do it, just finish it.
There's that 12 days since they acknowledged.
Well, since he perceived it. He never acknowledged it anyway, yeah.
How many stars worth of reviews did they get?
It can be great.
Anything else on restrooms?
Um, yeah, I guess I'll ask the council, just, would the first of the month letter that I sent out be, of this coming month be sufficient?
Yes.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press. for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
All right, moving on to department heads. Police Sergeant Derek Thompson is not here, but he did send me a message to read to you guys. He said that Lintec is bidding running the rest of the 50 pair and running 24 pair single mode fiber. So you guys, I guess, made something already for that 50 pair from the MPD.
Yes, we installed the underground conduit from the city hall to the police departments or law enforcement tower. We're not great at conduit, we're above ground, so we contacted an electrician to finish that out.
Yeah, he said, I contacted.
Pointing an electrician to contact. I was notified, or I was, Gilbert Nelson with Homeland Security called me today and said they were gonna contact, where's the letter?
And then he said there will be some additional conduit installed above ground to complete the run and plan of two buildings. They should have a bid for the joint powers awards soon as they were met, here measuring today. The city crew installed a buried conduit last week between the two buildings. He's still waiting on desks and tables to be completed by the armor camp so they can move into the new building. And then the numbers they got for me today to report was from September 1st to the 18th, the MPD has had 213 calls. The Weston County Sheriff's Department had 115. The Newcastle Volunteer Fire Department had six. The Weston County Fire District had three. The Upton Police Department had 40. The Upton Volunteer Fire Department had one. Newcastle Ambulance Service had 33. Upton Ambulance had two. And then 148 walk-ins to, into the building. So year-to-date, the MPD had 2,265 and the Sheriff's Department had 1,788. Also, the dispatcher, Allison Stevens, that we motioned for him that when everything was clear and could go to higher, everything did come back and in all favor. So they're hoping to have her start at the end of the month, which we already had a motion on. And that's all that I would say. Moving on to the city attorney's government.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The last city council meeting, I was told to basically go through and look at Sundance's law enforcement services agreement between the sheriff's department and the city of Sundance. Basically what this entails is just certain duties. There's obviously consideration back and forth for it to be an actual enforceable agreement. And what it basically states for what the sheriff's department is supposed to do is they state that they'll provide 24-hour service. Deputies will be assigned to Sundance that basically look over the town and certain ordinances that basically want to be looked at more stringently. As of recently, I believe it was Chris Ringer retired as the municipal court judge in Sundance. And I believe that was actually this last week when, or maybe the week prior to that. But either way, they'll be having their own municipal court again, which I don't know how long that's lapsed, but. And it more or less entails basically what payment is, the equipment to be used, what it'll be used as, et cetera. I guess I would just open it up for questions from the council as to any questions they have concerning that sort of arrangement for law enforcement.
Did they actually save any money doing it?
So I'm fairly certain that it was, it was a substantial amount. Obviously, there's unforeseen costs that come into play with establishing a new mode of operating a law enforcement group, but yes, I think the city did end up saving quite a bit of money on that.
One of the things too was, are they happy with it? Because there was like grumblings that maybe they weren't happy with that decision.
So one of the things that the council, as we all know, any decision, there will be people who are unhappy for whatever you do. There are people in Sundance who do think that the city ordinances, specifically such things as, you know, trash or junk vehicles or things of that nature, isn't enforced as much as it should be. But that kind of comes down to who you actually ask and how someone will take it as the greatest decision, you know, the county or the city's ever made, and some people take it as the worst decision that's ever been made.
I mean, you live in the community. Can you provide us with your personal opinion on what you think?
What I would say is that I think, again, we're comparing two very different cities for law enforcement. One of the reasons being is that just a larger population in general, as well as, you know, having a refinery, you know, things of that nature, basically entails you're gonna have more people, more crime, right? More nuisances, more ordinance violations, et cetera. Sundance doesn't really have a, you know, a large enough population for it to be, you know, rising to that level. And frankly, that in and of itself makes it just easier, I think, on law enforcement. But I like Sundance. I really like Sundance, so I don't particularly have a notice that he changes, but to be fair, I was also in school when the changes happened.
Well, I definitely think that it's something that needs to be researched more thoroughly. Can I have a copy of the agreement?
Yes. I will get that out to the council.
It's a little like Mayberry up there.
Lot different than here. I like some of those too.
Well, they got an energy.
Are there any other questions for, concerning the law enforcement agreement between the city and sheriff's department and the county? Talk about the UBC thing. Oh, yeah. So we have a sewer water contracts and Greg and I looked those over, and some of them are expired, some of them obviously are gonna be different just because the entities themselves, you know, the manner in which they take water is different than others. So I just wanted to get some clarification from the council on, do we want a, basically a standard water form? We have a few in mind that Greg and I looked over. We thought that would be good and basically just move forward with, you know, editing and trying to get something that's a little, you know, more up to date, that's you guys, that the council and the city basically can give out instead of having to tailor every single contract to every single entity.
I agree with that. We should have a standard contract if we don't look like we're favoring one business over somebody else. We want.
Yes, I may. My, my thought on this is, when I was starting reviewing the contracts, you had to really look and see what the price was and where it was added to the contract. Everyone was in a different place. It made it difficult to review the contracts and find that, you know, to find a standard way of reading the contracts. That's all I'm trying to do is kind of standardize.
Yep.
First paragraph has this, second paragraph has this, we can adjust everything from there.
So when, when are we going to have contracts or when, looking at this, and there are all these, some of them say expired and they're not, what's a reasonable look that when they'll be finished, that we'll have a contract with these businesses?
I'll have the drafts for tomorrow, tomorrow's meeting with the water sewer committee.
Oh, you will, okay. Thank you. I said, uh.
And that's everything, Madam Mayor.
City, or any questions for the, city clerk, pressure, Stacy?
Thank you. I would just want the council to know I'm working on the F-66 state audit and I got an email from Jordan Thorsten about audit time. So yeah, so we're looking, we'll look at it over the next couple months. That's all.
Any questions for city clerk? Level supervisor, Greg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mainly I have three items. The first one, we did the bid opening for the water sewer project for this year. We originally budgeted $350,000 for this project. It was paving on First Avenue, birch, and milling overlay on Mersenka, and chip seal on portion of town right around here. The, we only received one bid, and it was $197,888.50. Over budget? Over budget. Looking at options and talking to the engineer, Bartlett, my recommendation would be to reject all bids. And we did this project as the paving portion only, and then it's do a separate chip seal portion for next fiscal year, separate the two out, and find out there were other contractors that were interested in it, but don't have the capabilities of doing the chip seal. So to fund this, I guess, with getting First Avenue done this year again, because it is currently a gravel road, wood-stained gravel all the way all the way along. And the chip seal portion of the project was $380,000. So if we could actually do the paving portion of the project, looking at these numbers, and come in under budget this year, set some of that money back to call fund the chip seal project in extra.
I would move that we reject the bids.
I'm sorry?
You have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed same time.
And we'll begin working on splitting the project up and putting it through again.
Thank you.
We, the engineers have finished the cemetery plaque. We have the plaque now. I recommend the county chairman, your Bartlett, and I go through you if everything seems to be in order. I would recommend the council authorize the mayor to sign the plaque. That way we can get recorded in the courthouse and begin selling the city, city cemetery plaque. We only have one mile of coffee right now.
If anybody wants to see it, we can start it.
I would move that we have the mayor sign the cemetery plaque.
Yeah, what we're gonna know if we look at it. I wouldn't know without looking at it. I don't want to.
I'm glad he said that because I ended up putting it on there.
Is that the same idea? Yeah, a little bit. I tried to be honest.
Do we have a second?
I'm ready.
Second. You have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed same time.
The other item I have, the plotter for the engineer's office, the ones that make those maps there, the big maps, as well as scan larger maps, is, okay, we have done everything we can do next to totally revolve in that, and it would be cheaper to purchase a new one. The one we're looking at is $6,800, but it has scanning capabilities. We paid a lot of money to have all of our ads built with CNN, so we have electronically, but it's so much easier to work with. If you have a bunch of stuff, we still need to get CNN, so we'd like to purchase a plotter for the engineer. Can you show for, for price? I'm a little, yeah. Engineer, Bartlett's been working on this for about a month, looking at different prices and different options and things like that. From where, from the flipping, everybody? Um, I don't know, there was four different places he was, he was looking at, I'm not sure, nine different places to sell these. One he was looking at was an HP, similar to one we have that has scanning capabilities.
Do you have a document in your budget line for that?
We should.
In-state or out-state?
You have the out-state, I'm sure. If there's somebody in-state, I would, I would, we'll have to look. Top law, those guys, the chairman come down here a lot, we can talk to him and see. That's all I have. Well, yeah, I do have a couple of these. DEQ, Department of Fire, which is different than Region ADPA, they're wanting to come in and sample our source water for P-VAS and P-FOS. Do not ask me to say what these P-VAS and P-FOS stand for, because it's words about that one.
Oh, they're fluoridated.
Yeah. You know what, it's hard to.
They need our permission to come in?
They want, they want to come in and do them. We don't have to pay a dime for it, but we can show them all the wells are in there. I don't necessarily see a problem with it. We've tested for P-VAS and P-FOS once and found nothing in our source water. Just has the potential to open up other cans of worms.
Yes, I'm saying.
DEQ is, when they're doing these, obviously, when they're testing for this P-FOS, they look for other chemical chains. They're testing parts per bay of. Most of everything else is tested first per bay of.
There actually has been parts per trillion. Oh, wow.
So this is gonna be really low numbers. It doesn't have to be much in there for them to detect it, and then it's gonna be an, oh, oh, yeah, you have P-FOS. They did do, once that went around the sampling, our EPA did, we're slated to do another unradulated monitoring in 2020 for this with EPA. And unfortunately, we don't have a choice.
We don't have any choice. We can't take them on right now.
Are they footing the bill for the testing?
They're footing the bill.
Already expensive?
Yeah, they're footing the bill on this one. EPA is supposed to put the bill on the next one. It's okay, I'll, I'll, I don't, I don't see a problem. They're not a problem with the testing, but there is potentially a problem with the test, they'll step back and try and prove where it come from. That's the issue. Groundwater sourcing, I have real direct influence from the surface. Usually do not have any problems with this. And ours, deep water wells in Madison. I, okay, don't see a problem with it here. I can see a problem with it in the distribution system, but not necessarily in the surface.
I mean, eventually, we're gonna be required to do it anyway, so I don't see a problem personally with doing it now, especially if they're paying for it. The tests are like 14 or 15 hundred dollars to test.
I have a question for you. We had a discussion here a few meetings ago, or you had some surplus equipment that could be sold on?
Yes, we're gathering up, we got everything lined up finally. We're trying to get all the bid numbers and stuff like that gathered up. So next meeting, I'll oversee with a list of vehicles and.
Right there is your $6,800 for your new prater, you know?
Yeah. General fun. The only other item, we do have a sanitary survey this week. EPA finally did contact us. What this is, it's every three years, EPA comes in and reviews our water records, water system maps, projects we've completed, things like that, and then we give a tour of all our facilities and inspect those. So it's a standard thing they do every three years.
Well, I'm just hoping you don't have too many yikes.
Hopefully, it's not like the overflow situation where they spent $65,000 on it.
I have a question you had. The tire situation of landfill? We're only allowed 10,000 tires and it's almost full. What are we gonna do after that? that?
That was Greg, presented this by, it's fine. I've done some research, we found that they had a company that, Scotts Love Nebraska, came in and they wanted to basically pay, have us pay them to take the tires. Be fifteen cents a pound is what they would want. Be just a little over what we take in. They would take and recycle them and grind them. I don't know, I gotta look back from a non-perspective, because I don't remember what a car tire weighs, truck tire weighs. This company, basically, you don't care what it is unless it's an industrial tire, like a straighter tire, they'll, they'll take it all in, in one of them. The other companies, we would have to separate it in, it would be recycling tires.
So can we raise our rates per tire to a percent of that?
Well, DEQ, um, my, my, wanting DEQ, um, through the season transfer, season transfer process program, they said they could help us out. I'm trying to get the information from gentleman, I think it'll, I see how much they're willing to help out. Could, could maybe get a fifty-fifty dollar share on this and that would be, that'd be profitable, I guess.
What do we charge for game tires?
Three, it's either three or four dollars a car tire, ten dollars a truck tire, and it's all based on their size, and anything over a certain size, I want to see it's twenty dollars.
So is that something we need to reduce or improve?
We're close enough to end of landfill, end of landfill lifetime, and I'm not sure adjusting landfill prices and how it would be, would be worth it. I mean, we, we get a little money, if the council wishes to, we can address that there in sanitation. But DEQ, they help us with this, not set half the cost of recycling tires.
Any questions for? Um, any scanning committee reports? Any other business? Can I get a motion to leave, um, regular session that enter into executive session reference, um, my own statute sixteen-four dash four oh five, eighty double I personnel?
So moved, sorry.
Okay, um, you have a motion, second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of us opposed, same time. Okay, moving into executive session at eight-thirty.